Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, City of Canal Winchester Planning and Zoning Meeting. Ms. McDonald, roll call, please.
Um, Joe Donahue?
Present.
Joe Waldenthaler?
Present.
Rick Deeds, absent. Eileen Gooden?
Present.
Deborah McDonald here. Steve Palsgrove?
Here.
Brad Ritchie, absent.
Mr. Chairman, I move we excuse Mr. Ritchie and Mr. Deeds?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Waldenthaler, second by Mr. Palsgrove. Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Waldenthaler?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald, yes. Mr. Palsgrove?
Yes.
Time in 7:01 PM. I'll now need approval for our October minutes.
I move that the October 14th minutes be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Palsgrove, second by Mr. Waldenthaler. Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Waldenthaler?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald, yes. Mr. Palsgrove?
Yes.
So now it's time for public comment for items that are not on our agenda this evening. So if there's anybody here from a member of the public that wishes to speak before us for an item that's not on the agenda, now would be your time. If you'll be speaking with us this evening as an applicant or as a member of the public, would you please stand, if you're able, and raise your right hand and take an oath? So if there's any chance you'll speak to the commission this evening, do you swear to be truthful in the testimony you give? Tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth. If so, please say "I do." Thank you. I will turn it over to staff for our first application.
The first application on tonight's agenda is variance 24-006. The address of the subject property is a vacant 6.09 acres located on the south side of Groveport Road, consisting of two parcels, parcel 1, 184001173, and parcel number 2, 184001169. The request this evening is a variance to Chapter 1157.03, subsection A1, to reduce the frontage requirements for a church or similar house of worship on the subject property. Up on the screen is zoning map of the 6.09 acres. This site is zoned R3 low-density residential. Surrounding properties are all zoned R3 low-density residential. Properties to the west on the screen are currently being developed by the Columbus Metropolitan Library. And the property, vacant property immediately to the west, is a vacant parcel that has zero frontage on a public roadway. The applicant is, has already filed conditional use application CU24003 to permit an 8162 square foot, 250-seat church on the subject property. During the application for the conditional use, that was tabled by the Planning and Zoning Commission as they did not meet the 300-foot requirement along Groveport Road as parcel number one here only has 129.37 feet of frontage. The applicant, again, has filed the variance application for a request to reduce the frontage requirements. The frontage requirement itself is not for frontage exactly on Groveport Road. For clarification, that is frontage for the minimum building setback line for the zoning district. So in this case, the minimum building setback line is 30 feet away from the public frontage. So 30 feet away from Groveport Road's right-of-way, they need to have 300 feet. Again, they still have the 129 feet. The applicant is requesting this variance due to special circumstances and conditions as the property had the existing frontage at the time they put the property under contract for purchase. When looking at the literal interpretation of the zoning code, it would limit the site where it is not applicable for a church or house of worship as it does not meet the 300-foot frontage. However, the site does meet the minimum three-acre requirements when looking at both parcels outlined in red together at 5.982 acres. The literal interpretation of the zoning code, again, requires that 300-foot frontage. And for the applicant, their justifying this does not result in actions provided by them and that the applicant did not create the existing site layout and frontage or the current situation of parcels that exist in the area. For granting the variance to confer any undue privilege, it is denied by the zoning code. A church or house of worship is a conditional use in the R3 zoning district. The applicant is requesting to waive the requirement for 300-foot frontage or Groveport Road and does note that where the building is currently placed on-site, it is approximately 523 feet in total lot width, which exceeds the 300-foot minimum as noted in the zoning code. Granting this variance would waive the requirements for lot width for a church to be located in the R3 zoning district. This layout provides the proper use for pushing the building off Groveport Road. This setback that the church is shown on the screen here is very similar to other churches along the Groveport Road corridor. And that granting this variance would solely be to permit a church or similar house of worship on this six-acre tract of land. The property, again, does not meet the frontage requirements to apply for the conditional use outright. When looking at, again, the parcels in question here, again, there are two parcels. Parcel 1, which is the smaller of the two, has frontage or Groveport Road. Parcel number 2 does not have any frontage at all. Both of these parcels are currently owned by the same property owner. When looking at the site plan context, again, 30 feet away from the public right-of-way, they are required to have 300 feet of frontage. The site currently has 129, but the applicant does note that back where the building is placed, their lot width is in excess of 523 feet. Again, just for context of the updated site plan based off of conditions surrounding, again, the Columbus Metropolitan Library being developed here to the east, the two parcels the church is requesting to purchase and develop on are outlined in red, and then again, surrounding single-family homes and a vacant parcel zoned low-density residential immediately to the west. So pending comments from the commission and adjacent neighbors, staff is recommending that VA24006 be approved with the following conditions: that the two parcels be combined to create one overall parcel, and that condition number two, any church developed on the site be setback from Groveport Road so that it meets the minimum 300-foot lot width at the building setback line, similar to what is being presented by the applicant.
Questions for staff?
So we're talking about 300-foot lot width and the variance for 300-feet frontage to Groveport Road?
The variance is to reduce that requirement?
Reduce the requirement for the frontage only.
Correct. I think it's easier in this case just to say "frontage" rather than "setback" because the 30-foot distance is the same number. It makes, I think, the conversation a little more hollow this evening. That's why I've been referring to it that way.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I have a quick question, if I may. If we combine the two parcels into one parcel, the current regulations would not allow for an additional subdivision for the property to the south. Is that correct?
Correct. So for any subdivision on the property, we would require that the frontage for that zoning district be met. So if these two parcels were combined, to subdivide any further, a new parcel would have to have 80 feet of frontage on a public right-of-way.
Or it could be transferred to adjacent property owners.
Or, yeah, it could be transferred to an adjoining property owner.
Okay. But then if we were, just theoretically, if we were to say, okay, the church wants to sell this southern part and they want to subdivide it and sell it to the property owner to the, that would be the west, I think?
The west.
To the west, which is a landlocked parcel, we would not be able to do that.
Correct.
Okay. And so the only way that that could be subdivided and then used for any other purpose would be then to combine it with something to the south because there's a road that leads up to that? Or is that still not going to meet the requirements of road frontage?
Be the south or the east.
It would have to be combined with an adjoining property that has frontage.
Correct. It still has to have, okay. So let's say the library wanted to purchase it. They could because they have the frontage.
Correct.
But no one to the south or the east could acquire that property.
The property at 335 or 240 Woodsview could purchase it as they have frontage to that subdivision to the south.
335 is, oh, to the north. Oh, 335 to the south, I see.
This home here and this home here could purchase, and we would make a condition of the split, the immediate combination of those parcels. So this property could purchase because they have frontage off of Woodsview Drive. This property could purchase because they have frontage off of Woodsview Drive.
But they would need how many linear feet of road frontage?
It's an existing parcel, so they could combine that way.
Okay.
It would be creating a new parcel that does not have, that's not a combination, would have to have a minimum of 80.
Okay. I'm just concerned about putting them together and then not being able to split it if this board is asked to do that in the future. Does that make sense to you guys? Okay. And then the requirements for the parcel to the west would need some sort of a legal agreement that they could access this road to the north? Is that correct?
So from a private standpoint, that property owner would need an access easement to get to their parcel if one doesn't currently exist.
Okay.
To develop on the parcel, the Planning and Zoning Commission would have to approve a variance to develop on the property without the required frontage because it's a non-conforming parcel currently.
Okay. So would that be something that this board would consider with considering this parcel being combined?
That would be a future application if someone wanted to develop on the property not in this application to the west. So this, if someone wanted to develop on this piece, that would be something they would have to come before Planning and Zoning Commission in the future.
Okay.
But currently, as the plan shows, this parcel cannot be developed without obtaining some sort of variance.
Right. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
But if we approved the variance on this, on the current parcel that we're discussing, and they have somebody that comes along a year or two down the road and wants to buy or develop there, do they, so this would be, this would be the private sector, so they would work directly with the church and the ownership of that parcel? Could be any adjacent parcel to obtain access to a roadway.
They could get access to the north, to the south.
So I think what we're both getting at is what's the starting point of that process? Is it a variance request or is it a legal agreement between the property owners? It'd be an easement agreement with an adjacent property owner or purchasing property to gain access to a public right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant present?
Please, sir. And I will say, I failed to mention this at the beginning, there are five of us here this evening, so any vote that we have tonight per city statute, we have to have four positive votes to carry. So if we vote three to two on an application, that application would fail. So I'd just like the public and the applicants to know that coming in.
Okay. Appreciate it. Good evening. Just as a quick reminder, because I did speak with you all last month, my name's Greg Hesterman. I am an elder laypastor at New Life Church, but I also, in my full-time capacity, serve as a Realtor with RE/MAX Apex out of Bythopolis. This evening, I've also brought my engineer Craig Stevenson with me in the event there's any questions pertaining to our application from that standpoint. So for tonight, there's two requests, right? One is for the conditional use and then for the variance approval. I just want to give you a very quick review of how we ended up in contract on this property and then address each of those requests. We've been in contract on these approximately six acres of land since June of this year. And our ability to actually close on the land and purchase is contingent on both these issues being solved successfully. New Life Church has been a member of the Canal Winchester community for 25 years, since we were first established back in 1999. We've been active in every capacity since then, and we value our relationship with the city and those people that live and work within the confines of Canal Winchester. Over the last five years, we've been looking for land throughout the Canal Winchester area. We've looked at five vacant parcels as well as six existing buildings. From an existing building standpoint, the challenge is that the zoning for us to find a residentially-zoned parcel or property that exists already is near impossible. From a land standpoint, the challenge is just the cost of residential land throughout Canal Winchester. I think we all understand the housing crisis and what's been going on there. So when we came across this property, we realized it wasn't ideal, but it met most of our requirements. We've spent approximately a little over $20,000 in doing evaluations on the soils, the drainage, surveying, that sort of thing, just to make sure this property is feasible for us. And that's where we stand before you today. By far, this property is the best location we've come across in five years of looking. For about the last 18 months, I personally have been working with Andrew, and he's been very helpful just to try and address, once we got into contract on this land, what his concerns would be, and specifically from the city's standpoint. I've also reached out to every neighbor that adjoins the property, either directly or through their Realtor, to make sure they understood what our intentions were and what our purpose was in developing on this land. We understood fully the conditional use requirement when we went into contract. The 300-foot lot width requirement was something that was only discovered about a week before our last meeting with you in October. And it does get a little complex with some of the zoning stuff. I'm sure you understand that. So I want to address the lot width requirement to begin with. As I dove into what is driving these requirements and I looked at what the code has, you know, there's numerous church requirements for conditional use, and most of them make sense. In fact, you'll find most of them are common across most municipalities, lot size of three acres, parking requirements, those sort of things. The 300-foot one, I will say, stands out. None of our adjoining municipalities have a 300-foot lot width requirement in their code. I found that to be curious. I also asked Andrew if he could explain to me what is the purpose of the 300-foot requirement from a zoning standard, you know, because that's what matters, right? Why is this requirement here and what's the purpose of it? Thus far, I haven't been able to get an answer. I don't blame Andrew for that at all. I just think it's oftentimes when you're not here and they write the code, we don't fully grasp what that requirement is. So I dug further into the canal code and just to see what the other lot width requirements are, and that was also interesting. No other purpose other than a church has a similar 300-foot lot width requirement in the residential. Multifamily requires an 80-foot lot width. R1 requires 100-foot lot width. The closest one I could find is a planned residential district, which does require a 350-foot lot width. The unique piece of that requirement, though, is it's actually measured at the building line. So if you look at where our building line is with its setback, as Andrew mentioned, we have over 500 feet there. I also looked at other churches within Canal Winchester to see what their current lot widths are, specifically in the downtown area, because I feel like this falls into a similar comparison. Now, there's definitely some that are over this 300-foot requirement, but I did find specifically four existing churches that do not meet the 300-foot requirement. They are anywhere from 263 feet down to 114 feet, and they've been operating, most of them in Canal Winchester, obviously previous to this code, but doing just fine and, in my opinion, don't make a negative impact on the community. I'd like to say we meet the spirit of the requirement. However, not knowing what the purpose is, I can't say that definitively. It has definitely been a challenge, but I do think it's something that matters when it comes to how we impact our neighbors specifically. Regarding conditional use, as I mentioned, it's hard for us to find land within Canal Winchester. You may or may not know that this property's actually been listed for sale for three and a half years. It's been on and off the market. It's been in contract and out of contract. Other developers have looked at it and have been unable to do it in a profitable way, specifically for building single-family homes back there. The main issue being the soil type as well as the stormwater drain that runs from east to west through about the center of the property, just along the border of where the parking lot is. You can see there a little bit of green space. That's where the stormwater line is. During my conversations with the neighbors, they've been very positive so far. Someone who's here tonight, I hope they're willing to come forward and share, but I've only really heard two concerns over our possible construction on this site. One was actually during the last planning and zoning meeting that there's too many churches. I will say, we're not a new church, as I mentioned. We've been a part of Canal Winchester for 25 years. And to me, to argue that there's too many churches along Groveport Pike is no different than arguing there's too much fast food along Gander Road or too many auto repair places along Gander Road, right? People have different opinions on what type of church they'd like to attend. We've been successful in maintaining our church and do very, very well, and from that aspect, I don't see that being a huge impact. The other concern, I've heard it actually from the commission, and it's valid. I've heard it from the real estate agent that is actually listing this property as well as that current vacant lot that is also listed, as well as the current owner, that the concern is over that property being landlocked, that L-shaped property there to the west. As I've dug into that and how that became so, you know, our purchase of this land does not cause harm to Mr. Fezel. Mr. Fezel had that land and owned the house, I believe it is 335, on Woodsview Drive, parceled it off, sold the house back in 2005, but kept the land. I don't know why that was allowed. I don't know what his thought process was in doing that, but that was effectively when that parcel became landlocked. To me, that's an important point to realize. Another point, Ms. Evelyn Rush, who's the current owner of parcels 1 and 2 up there, you know, I feel it's not fair to her that she should be forced to remedy a situation that is caused by Mr. Fezel. You know, why is she being singled out as opposed to any other property owner that abuts this property? Any of those, or at least a few of them, could be utilized effectively to solve the road frontage issue as well. Mr. Fezel, when he sold off the property in 2005, he's had since that time to actually establish a relationship and settle this issue with a known problem with that landlocked parcel. In that time, to my knowledge, he has not contacted Mrs. Rush. I think he did have a conversation with her husband before he passed away, but since he's passed away, they've never reached out to Mrs. Rush to try and resolve this. I think it was a handshake deal, but it was never put into writing. And I think we all understand and appreciate, unless it's in writing, it doesn't really stand there. I will say, Mr. Fezel's Realtor, Beth Hennick, who's here this evening, has been very, you know, transparent about their concerns regarding a landlocked parcel. And since before we were in contract, since it first came on the market, that we looked at it back in February, we've been open to consideration of drawing up an agreement to allow, I believe the best solution would be a shared drive going, the site plan, the second site plan that I believe you have, should have a rough draft drawing of where that could go in order for them to access that property. The challenge is, we don't have an agreement today. That is a known fact. We're willing to have that conversation, but from a legal standpoint, a maintenance standpoint, a cost standpoint, you know, it's just something we need to get into a conversation. It wasn't appropriate for me to have that conversation with Mrs. Rush, because she doesn't own that property. It would be a conversation between me and Mr. Fezel's daughter, who's actually voicing her concerns on their behalf at their direction. I do appreciate their situation significantly, and I want to assist them in any way that I can, but causing us to put off the purchase of this property would delay us, it could delay us many, many months. And from our church's body perspective, that's a very significant challenge. We've been operating out of a leased space that is approximately half the size of what we're proposing to build, and while we can't start construction tomorrow, every day that we lose will definitely impact us long-term. So in our opinion, allowing conditional use for this property for a church and the required variance is beneficial, not just for New Life Church. It's beneficial for Mrs. Rush in the sale of the property, but it's also beneficial for the citizens of Canal Winchester. And the reason I say that is because we do care about what happens in this community, and we've actively engaged. I'd just like to give you a quick vignette on how we, as a church, care about the community of Canal Winchester. This last Saturday was, we were celebrating Veterans Day. I'm a proud veteran, 33 years myself, and it's a special day. It is. One of our other elders was asked by Ms. Hannah Woodruff to actually do the opening invocation and closing benediction, which he gladly did. In fact, we were on a retreat and we came back a day early so that he could participate in that. I, myself, as a member of the VFW that meets right here, carried the flag through the parade and fired the 21-gun salute. Other members of our church were there, both as veterans and community members, to support the Canal Winchester city and all who live here. We've been active in every event Canal Winchester holds, whether it's art in the park, music in the park. We bring out our art wall. We assist in any way we can. For Christmas in the Village, we've already volunteered to help with the ice skating rink. I think it's our fifth year helping with that specifically because we know it's important. We believe and fully know that what happens in Canal Winchester affects all of us. Our members live here, they work here, they worship here, and we really, really appreciate the opportunity to have a permanent location on this property so we can just continue to serve the community. So I'd like to see if you have any questions for me specifically, if there's anything I can do to help you in making your decision.
Are you okay with the two recommendations in the staff report?
Yes, sir. Those are very reasonable.
Okay. And are you okay seeking a vote from this commission this evening on these applications?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
I think I have one.
Yeah.
Is there, are you willing to make a commitment to work with the landlocked property to make sure that a legal easement is put in place so that that person can either sell that property with some type of access or continue, it looks like they're farming it, continue to farm it?
Yes, absolutely. One, our intention with the farming, that's a no-brainer for us. We're going to continue to do it, too, to maintain the property, you know, until we break ground. I actually spoke to her. She reached out to me. I've been reaching out through her Realtor, because as a Realtor, we're not allowed to go direct to our other agents' clients, right? So I've been working with Beth. But she reached out to me yesterday, asking for an agreement by 7:00 PM tonight. It was 5:00 yesterday. I was very honest with her. I said, my ability to do that is, it's just an unrealistic request. However, there's absolutely no reason why we wouldn't be willing to work with her to come up with a legal agreement on how that is to be managed. While I did state that other owners could do it as well, and that's not, that's perfectly true, I also realize that we are vacant, right? We have room for development. We have a plan, and we, because of that, I think it would make the most sense for us to be the ones to work with her, and we're willing to do so. I actually told her that again today around 4:00 this afternoon, that we'd be interested. I was just speaking with Beth, and I told her, next week, I'd like to set up a three-way phone call for us to just discuss the specifics and the costs involved, because it would be, you know, it wouldn't be free to do that between legal fees and surveys, that sort of thing. But yes, we're definitely willing to work with her.
Right.
Right.
Or the next owner.
What I would be looking for is a legal description with the meets and bounds that says you have this right to cross our property and to build on, build an access road and...
Me, too. That's why, doing anything short of that, I didn't feel was appropriate. I've worked with lawyers enough to, you want to be careful in what you put in writing, and I just want to make sure we do it the right way so that it's documented, because it's something 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now, those people will be dealing with. I've seen it in real estate enough to know how those are written really matters. So, yes.
And the property that you have to the south, are you going to continue to farm
We definitely want to maintain it, right? Whether or not it's feasible to farm, to get farm equipment back there, we'll have to talk to the farmer to see. You know, you've discussed some of the options tonight to see, you know, we don't have a plan to sell it off. I can address that question. I've spoken with Mr. Michael Lormis, who lives there at 240. He's here this evening as well, to see, you know, would he be interested? He's expressed some interest in taking some of it right now. You know, for us to develop that from a building standpoint with the stormwater drain, getting sewer and water to it is a challenge for us. So if I could dream, and I think I mentioned this last month, you know, to have a walking path that could possibly tie into Woodsview Drive, connect to the library as well as a bike path on the other side of Groveport Road would be our ideal situation, allowing, I don't know if it'd be sports fields, I don't know if there's a need for that, but even just a place for people to come, for their kids to play, that sort of thing. We want to be involved and be a place for the community to be able to enjoy Canal Winchester. Did I answer your question?
So you understand that we would not, as a planning commission, be able to recommend the subdivision of this property?
Absolutely. And my understanding is, tonight would just be the two requests. We'll still end up coming back, and I've been in talks with Andrew about this, to get a final approval on, you know, what does the actual building look like from an exterior, interior standpoint? You know, we have more, I have to, I've met with architects, but we haven't hired one yet to actually lay out what the requirements are specifically with the Ohio Fire Code. There's still a lot of work to be done. But yeah, any other further parceling, we would definitely be coming before you again.
So I have to share with you that I'm a little uncomfortable with the road frontage being so small, the 129 feet. I understand that the code says the 300 feet has to be at the building line. But do you see an issue with signage or visibility or, you know, some other type of obstacle that may impede the church in its development of the site?
No. I mean, a signage would definitely be something we need to talk through. Obviously, there's code requirements that we'll have to talk to Andrew about. We can't just go out and plop a sign out there. Obviously, I don't want to block, from a safety perspective, I don't want to block the view of people leaving the church to pull out into the road to cause an issue there. So that would definitely be something serious. I'm not overly concerned about access. I think with the new location of where the building is, you know, it's not on the road, but I think people will be able to find us just fine.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? So...
I've got one.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
We keep referring to this area as farming, but it's been really nothing but grass for how many years, for hay. I mean, it hasn't been corn or soybeans. There's no heavy equipment going in and out of there. It's just a smaller operation for hay bales.
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
That is correct, sir. And it's zoned residential already. The taxes are residential currently, so, yes.
Thank you. So for everybody's attendance, or who's in attendance input, so we are talking about VA 24006 and the conditional use 24003 kind of together. And just a reminder, the first application that we are on right now is a variance to reduce the frontage requirements in an R3 residential area. And then the conditional use would be to approve or allow for a church on the subject property that's zoned R3. So again, they would come back before us for final development plan. And we did hold a public hearing for the conditional use. So, Mr. Moore, I'll defer to you if we can open that back up, or if we should just hold the public hearing during this variance request.
So I went ahead and left the public hearing on the future application for the conditional use. Just based off of the presentation this evening has essentially more information that could be considered. So Chairman, if you want to hold two public hearings tonight, that is at your discretion.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll do that. So let's open it up, the public hearing right now. So this would be for variance for the frontage. So VA 24006, I'll now open it up for public hearing. If you wish to speak on this application, please come forward, sign in, state your name. You'll have four minutes. We'll show the timer on the screen, and I'll kindly interrupt you with 30 seconds left, letting you know that you have 30 seconds left. So if there's anybody that wishes to speak on the variance application.
Hi, I am Beth Hennig with Howard &amp; Hannah Real Estate Services. I represent both sellers, the seller of the Mohican property, which is landlocked, and the Groveport property. Neither seller can be here tonight, so I just kind of wanted you all to know where both sides are coming from. I received a letter from the sellers, Carol and Don LeFeesel, with the Mohican property. I received a letter from the daughter, Robin, today that I want to read to you.
We all have a letter.
Oh, you have that? Okay, so you already have that? Okay. So I have Evelyn Rush, the owner of the Groveport property, cannot be here. She wanted to come. She's in a wheelchair. She's not in good health. So she apologizes, but she did want me to, she has some concerns with the letter. So this is her response to the letter that you've already read. She wants to address the verbal agreement that was addressed in the letter. She said that she had no part of the verbal agreement. That was her husband. And she said there probably was an agreement. She said, back in the day, that's kind of what they did, a handshake and wink. But she doesn't know what was said or what wasn't said. She wasn't a part of it. So she just can't comment on that at all. She said her husband, Sam, died in 2009, so it's been 15 years. And she said, not once did the Feesels reach out to her, not a phone call, asking for an easement. She said, let's see. She said this property is already landlocked, and she said, the sale of my property does not change their situation. She also thought it was nice for the church to put that in their plans, and she feels that the church only has good intentions. And she feels that the church would be a very nice for the city of Canal Winchester. But she does not want to hold up this variance because of an easement that she was just asked for on the 11th hour to do.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
No, thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else wish to speak on this variance request? Gone once, gone twice. Okay. Need a motion to close.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close public hearing.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Gooden, second by Mr. Paulsgrove. Roll call, please.
Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald, yes. Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Mr. Wallenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
If we have discovered tonight that the variance that they've requested is for the width of the property along the road is not the appropriate measurement, it's the width at the property line, is there a need to have a variance?
I thought I understood the requirement was 30 feet off the road.
That's correct. Yeah, the technical analysis is, the lot width is at the minimum build two line, which is 30 feet away from the public right-of-way. Saying that out loud is a little more confusing. That's why staff has been saying at the right-of-way, at the frontage.
The frontage.
Because the building is set back in excess of 250 feet, 300 feet from Groveport Road, which is not the minimum at 30, which is what code requirement is.
Okay.
So that was my original question earlier, too, is I had to just talk it through in my head.
Yeah, this graphic here is, that's approximately 30 feet away from the right-of-way line. And so that's at 129, and it needs to be 300. And the applicant is noting that where the building's placed, they're at 523 feet.
Yep. Okay.
Andrew, are you, the applicant indicated that he had checked other municipalities, and no one else had this requirement for other than at the building line? Are you, would you agree with that?
I don't make it a point to try to read every other surrounding community's zoning code, but I will say that the conditional use standards are unique for municipality by municipality. And when looking at when the code changed, prior to 2001, the only two conditions a church needed was a minimum of three acres and then one acre for every 100 people. And then in 2002, when we did a major zoning code update, the other conditions, 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7 listed in your staff report were added as requirements. So at some point during that review for the zoning update, the city council felt it was necessary.
Thank you.
All right. Need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve variance VA 24-006.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Gooden, second by Mr. Paulsgrove. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Wallenthaler?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald, yes. Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
So variance is approved?
The next application for tonight's agenda is conditional use 24003. This application has been updated since the previous discussion back in October. Again, this is for a conditional use to permit a church or similar house of worship to operate on the subject property. As previously discussed with the last application, there are seven criteria that are required for a church to operate on the subject parcel. The first one, the minimum lot width of 300 feet, again, the applicant just received a variance to reduce that. The other criteria, the law is adequate with, excuse me, the law is adequate to accommodate off-street parking requirements. The church is setback from adjacent residential properties to a distant equal to or greater than the height. The church is accessible to a major arterial in a manner that does not require passage of traffic through local residential streets. That there is one acre per 100 seats or similar accommodations in the main assembly hall. That living quarters are a separate conditional use, and any accessory or recreational uses are a separate conditional use from Planning and Zoning Commission. The applicant has noted for their conditional use requirements here that a church is an R3 zoning district conditional use and is compatible. They just received, again, the variance from the one criteria for the 300-foot width for the frontage. The proposed use is compatible with adjacent land uses. The applicant notes there are three other churches along this corridor, on Groveport Road specifically, and that the 2024 community plan designates the site as a mixed-use neighborhood. And then notes that this could be a transition area from residential to small-scale housing formats, and also small-scale commercial uses that serve neighborhood residents. The proposed use at a 250-seat church would not adversely impact traffic flow or other types of impact for surrounding residential and church uses. The plans show a single access drive on Groveport Road leading back to the parking lot that is to the east of the building. This facility also showing the installation of a domestic water service to the building, installation of a public fire hydrant along the public right-of-way. And then the plans currently show a private sanitary force main that will provide sanitary service leading down Groveport Road to an existing gravity manhole. The site plan provided shows the majority of the property is lined with trees. There's not information at this time showing if there's going to be any impacts with this development. Again, that will come during a full site development plan application to see if any existing tree loss is anticipated. And at the updated site plan, again, the applicant noted here has basically mirrored the site from what was shown previously. The building is now in the southeast corner, southwest corner of parcel one, while the parking lot here is primarily on parcel two. And then the area north of the storm line is going to be developed, while the area to the south will remain vacant. When looking at some, staff had asked the applicant to provide some kind of information on what they were intending for the building to look like, knowing that the full site plan will come to you at some future date. But again, just to give some confidence to the Planning and Zoning Commission of what the intention was, the applicant has provided these three, and I think additional two more, farmhouse-style construction, what they would like their facility to resemble. They've also put together a preliminary floor plan just to reflect what you're seeing from a site perspective. When looking at the floor plan versus this page right here in the site plan, it's just turned 90 degrees. So this side, the backside of the sanctuary, is what would be facing Groveport Road, while all the administrative components are on the south side, again, on this side, just rotated. Again, context for the property, we've discussed this a lot this evening here, but again, the primary access is off of Groveport Road, leading into the parking lot. The current design has stormwater detention here in this northern corner, while the rest of this is planned to remain as is. Again, all the final details for grading, landscaping, building designs, elevations will come back at a future meeting. This request is solely just to permit a church or similar house of worship to operate on the subject property. So staff is recommending that conditional use application be approved as presented.
Any questions for the staff? Anything the applicant wishes to add on this one? Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
No.
So I will open up for public hearing. If there's anybody that wishes to speak that didn't speak before, now would be your time.
Seeing no rush to the podium, I move to close public hearing. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Gooden, second by Mr. Paulsgrove. Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Wallenthaler?
Mr. Wallenthaler?
No, I'm sorry.
Motion to close the public hearing? Yes?
Yes, yes. I'm sorry. I was...
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald, yes.
So I do have one question for staff. So if we approve conditional use to allow for a church on the subject property, and they want to do something with the land to the south, like recreational in the future, would they need to potentially apply for additional conditional use?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve conditional use 24-003.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Paulsgrove, second by Ms. Gooden. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald? Yes. Eileen Gooden?
Yes.
Mr. Wildenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The last application on tonight's agenda, Final Development Plan 24-001. The location of the subject property is 300 Washington Street. The request this evening is a final development plan for an expansion to the Canal Winchester High School football stadium bleachers. This subject property outlined on the screen is a 20.5-acre tract of land that is zoned planned unit district. It is part of the Villages of Westchester subdivision, technically. This property was dedicated to the Canal Winchester schools in August of 1990 with ordinance 59-90 for one of the conditions as approval of the Villages of Westchester subdivision. In 1991, the school district received approval for constructing the Canal Winchester High School, and then also Phase 1 of the football stadium. Phase 1 of the football stadium included 2,600 seats. It was noted at the time of the approvals in 1991 that they would be coming back in the future for Phase 2. That would expand seating for up to 4,800 people. The request this evening is to extend, expand the football stadium bleachers to a total of 4,730 seats, just shy of that initial 4,800 target that they planned for back in When looking at the overall site plan here of the property for the Canal Winchester High School, you can see here that it's a massive tract of land that consists of two parcels. The main parcel consists of the high school, some recreational fields that go all the way up to Franklin Street, and then the 20.5-acre PUD-zoned piece that consists of the Canal Winchester football stadium, and then more athletic fields here to the west. This project, again, is to expand the home bleachers and visitor bleachers for an additional seating capacity. When looking at the plans here, the applicant is showing expansion on both north and south sides of the bleachers. The total home seats with the expansion is just over 3,000, 3,066 to be exact. The plans for the bleachers here are primarily the same as the existing context. The only visual difference that staff could ascertain is, is building code now requires a aisle on the very top for egress, while currently it just leads up to one last row for the bleachers. So there's a little visual expansion here that isn't present in the existing construction. This project's also increasing the ADA capacity and availability to the seating, as you can see here with the reconfiguration of the ramps and the number of ADA spaces on that first row. When looking at the visitors' bleachers, a similar situation as the home side for a total of 1,660-some spaces for the visitor's side. One of the items that was pretty thought out in 1991 was how to park this whole facility. Back at that timeframe, the city and city council acknowledged that this overflow field here to the west of the football stadium would account for roughly 600 parking stalls, and that they could fit that many for an overflow scenario at max capacity. Some of the justification staff saw in this, both staff report and approvals, was to decrease the amount of impervious surface for vehicular parking for normal day-by-day demand, and then also just becoming less burdened some for the facility as a whole. So this area that's outlined by the applicant, they're still showing for the overflow parking, again, for that additional 500-seat kind of void that they're missing per our parking With that, the only other thing to mention is that the applicant's plans do note that the stadium bleachers will match currently what's there as much as possible. I think I took the language out. But there's a note on the second plan sheet that says that the company that's producing the bleachers has not been selected yet, but the design's to be primarily the same. So that's why the elevations this evening are architectural only. With that, staff is recommending that FDP 24001 be approved as presented.
Questions for staff? Anything the applicant wishes to add? Any questions for the applicant?
Nope.
All right, need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Final Development Plan 24-001.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Gooden, second by Mr. Paulsgrove. Roll call, please.
Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald? Yes. Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Mr. Wildenthaler?
Yes.
And Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Final development plan is approved. Any new business?
I just wanted to provide a quick update. We did get three responses for the request for proposals for the zoning code rewrite. We are currently evaluating those. We met last week as a steering committee with council, and Deborah met with us as well to review those. We have a preferred consultant that we are working on getting into contract with currently. So hopefully, in the, in the weeks to come, we'll have a contract in front of city council with the intent to start the code rewrite in January.
So what do we, so what would the timeframe be on that, roughly?
This selected consultant's timeframe, or the one that we're negotiating with, is 16 months.
And then does it come to us as a package?
Yes, it'll come as a draft package initially, and then as a final draft. So our hope is to share those throughout the process. And so we would like to get a few people to serve on a steering committee from planning and zoning, so.
So would this be like what we talked about tonight, you know, rewriting code?
It is a full rewrite of the code.
And we are looking at this, why?
It was suggested in the community plan.
Okay.
So there are a number of zoning districts that were suggested in the future land use map as part of the community plan that aren't reflected in our current codes.
Okay.
And then it's a way to help update, you know, from a legal perspective, you know, there's certain case law, things like that that have changed over time, and just to be a more modern and user-friendly code. You know, it can be burdensome with some of our code sections, and it's not displayed in a, in a way that the average person can easily understand what it's trying to, to get at, so.
Got you. Thank you. Any other new business? Would it be possible to have at December's meeting, Mr. Moore, terms of commissioners? Do we have any terms expiring this year for this commission, for this body?
I will, I'll have, I'll send an email out tomorrow on where everybody's at on their terms.
Okay.
I don't believe we have anyone expiring on planning and zoning.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Paulsgrove, second by Ms. Gooden. Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Wildenthaler?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Timeout, 8:00, 2:00 PM.